All right, we are now live. Go ahead, Vicki, you can call your meeting to order.
As Samara said, we will call this housing meeting to order. We have a roll call and I think we're all here. There's Councilman Sheldon and Councilwoman Caruba. So we are all here. So we'd just like to thank everyone for coming tonight. And we're so excited about our first person who's going to be sharing some information. And that is going to be Lisa Miller. She's going to talk to us about an upcoming grant that the county is going for. So Lisa, would you like to go ahead and give us some information about regarding this grant?
I will. Thank you so much, Vicki. I had spoken with Brent Sheldon, had asked if I would join you and talk a little bit about the HUD grant that we are applying for at the county. This is a HUD Lead Hazard Control Grant in the amount of $3 million to do work over approximately 42 months. And we, the county has held this grant in the past. It's been a couple of years now. We are partnering with Chautauqua Opportunities. So we would be the applicant, we'd be managing that grant, and then conducting some lead risk assessments, while Chautauqua Opportunities would be doing most of the day-to-day operations of the program. So it's, the idea is that we can get into homes of low-income families with children six or under, living or visiting for a significant amount of time, and to identify the lead risks in the home and to get them taken care of. So the idea is to make the home more or less permanently lead safe. This is a program that is open to homeowners. It is open to property owners. So rental units as well would be eligible. And again, it's, there are income guidelines. I want to say it's lower income. They're fairly, I think fairly generous for our area. And most of the work we'd be doing would be window replacement, door replacement. Those are friction surfaces that we oftentimes find lead paint. And then taking a look if we, if there's a need to do exterior work on the home, doing that as well. And then other painted surfaces that we would try to either replace or encapsulate in some way. So I think y'all remember I was with Jamestown Schools at a council meeting. It seems like years ago. It wasn't, I think it was not that long ago. Earlier this year, talking about the lead poisoning issue in our community. And every year in Chautauqua County, we're looking at in excess of 100 children being lead poisoned across the county. A significant number of those are in Jamestown. It's a combination of the old housing stock. A lot of homes that were built prior to 1978, almost all of them actually, 94% or something like that, that, that contained some level of lead paint. And then on top of it, those homes being in deteriorating condition just with time. So it's a significant amount of funding. It would allow us to do 120, I believe it's 120 to 150 homes. And included in that would be some capacity building that I think would serve the city and the county well over time in terms of increasing the number of contractors, number of qualified contractors to do this kind of work as well. So I'm here to answer any questions and I am here to ask for the support of council as we move ahead with this grant application.
So are you, you're looking for a letter of support for this project from the city?
Wait, we, what, we are, I've been speaking with Crystal and we've identified some matching dollars that we can use that is kind of for overlapping goals through the Community Development Block Grant. But I think, aside from that, I think it would be great to get all of council on board and supporting this project as council members for the districts that you're representing, for the wards you're representing and the people who are living in those wards as well.
Now you said you had this grant before, or is this just a continuation of something that you've already been doing? Or is it something, a new grant?
It was something that we had done, on the county had held the funds in the past and they were administered by CREG. And there's been a gap now in the time that we've had these funds, HUD funds available to the county.
Well, wasn't the issue that they did not meet the terms of the contract and the number of homes that were supposed to be remediated? I think that's partly why they lost the funding.
It's not that they lost the funding. The, the grant, the grant period had expired, but yes, that was a challenge that they had.
Do you anticipate with the, I think you said 120 to 150 homes in 40, that's a little over three years. Do you think you're going to have a problem reaching that number? Because what are, what are the terms? I mean, I think it's a great idea if we can get the funds. I think the problems in the past have been that properties that were owned by landlords, they don't necessarily want the testing done and want all of what goes with it. So some of the challenge is getting people to cooperate.
I agree. And I think, I think with Chautauqua Opportunities reaching the community, they're in a good position because of some of the work that they have, that they do and have done in the past with weatherization and with some other programs, and their ability to recruit tenants and property owners just in general through their programs and their central intake process, to let people know about the availability of those. I honestly think there was a community awareness issue last time that people didn't fully understand, didn't know about the program, didn't understand the guidelines for the program, what it took to participate, and really weren't necessarily aware of the benefits of participating.
What would be the commitment? You know, is there a financial, like a 50/50 commitment from the landlord? Is it, you know, what are the terms, or do you not know that yet, I guess, in terms of?
Yeah, I can tell you what we've discussed is in like a program design, in the past, it had been a 20/80 cost share. So the property owner was responsible for 20% of the cost. We're really looking to eliminate that barrier and just have a flat application fee. And we are making a significant in-kind investment at the county with our comprehensive lead poisoning program resources. So we would be doing a lot of the lead testing for that. You know, but again, it's making, it's helping property owners to be aware of like, what are the benefits to it? Did they know that we can help to pay if relocation, short-term and it's very short-term relocation is needed, the program can help to pay for that. They can get new windows, new doors, a more energy-efficient unit. And, you know, in the end, a unit with a little bit more value to it for $500, you know, for looking at that cost share for them. Another of the challenges last time that we heard, we've talked to a lot of, a lot of property owners, a lot of landlords in the community. And I've started talking more to contractors as well and just kind of feeling out, you know, what's the community capacity too. But getting tenant income information was a huge barrier last time for some of our landlords. Chautauqua Opportunities routinely does that. And I think, again, it's kind of how that's marketed and explain to people, why do we need your income information? No, we're not going to share it with your landlord. This is just, you know, we need this for program information. And again, Chautauqua Opportunities already collects a lot of that information. So I think they're a good partner to have.
Lisa, I was wondering, you said you mentioned the flat application fees. I have two questions. What would that application fee be? And you talked about community awareness was an issue last time. And what do you plan to do this time to help that out?
Well, I don't think anybody's missed us talking about lead poisoning in the last, over the last year or so. I think, so I think the application fee we've discussed at about $500, at $500. And that would be if they need to have work done. It's not going to be like, oh, pay $500 and take a chance on, you know, whether you need the work or not. So to get all new windows, doors and other work done for $500, I think as most people would see that as a pretty big bargain. And then as far as increasing the community awareness of the program, I, it's just dedicating the time to doing the community outreach. And you have organizations that are like CREG, and to some extent, we've had the same experience, I think, at the Chautauqua County. Brent, you can chime in on this, where we have a lead program that has technicians doing that work and environmental scientists and sanitarians and lead risk assessors aren't necessarily the people who are out really engaging the community and talking about it. So we've really tried to work hard on that at the county. And I think Chautauqua Opportunities is in a good position to do that as well. And we'd be working together on it. We established our Healthy Housing Task Force in late, late 2018. And we've had strong participation from a lot of community partners on that. So we've had the Jamestown Schools at the table. We've had the Jamestown Fire Department. We've had Jamestown Community Learning Council. We have the Office for the Aging. We have all kinds of organizations who I think are, are understanding that we have real housing problems in this community.
You also mentioned that you and Crystal had talked and there would be a 50/50 match, somewhere, a matching dollar somewhere. And so, Crystal, I guess my question is to you, would that be, would that all be, because you're using city dollars, would that also be able, a way to help people to get involved and, you know, get that information? You know, because of what you, you know, you've been working with owners and renters. And so you have, you know, you have some information. Would that be an asset, how would that be an asset to the program?
Sure. So it's not a 50/50 match, just to make sure that that's clear. It will be, we're going to look at a three-year estimate in terms of what our home programs. So, you know, looking at the different programs that we have that would be a natural sort of partnership with this effort. So we do a lot of window replacement and door replacement. And lead testing is part of every single project that we do. So it would be an easy way for us to partner and to provide those matching funds without doing anything different than what we already do, really. So it's just showing that we are making a commitment to coordinate with COI and the county on, you know, the projects that we have coming through our department. And if there are projects that maybe don't fit one of our programs, we can then refer them to their program. And, you know, vice versa, there may be opportunities for us to, you know, take a project that may be coming from the county or COI, and it could become a home program. So really trying to make sure that we're coordinating just a lot more and really letting, you know, the other, the right hand know what the left hand is doing, if you will. And so, you know, in terms of that community outreach and getting the word out there, we certainly will, will do that in every way that we can with, with all of our clients that come through our programs. And then if there are other ways that make sense for us to do that, we'll, we'll do that. The referral, I think, is probably one of the biggest things, though.
Thank you.
If I can just jump in, you know, we've had four of these grants before, the county health department has. We've had some landlords participate quite a bit, but we've had a lot of landlords who have not participated. And then changing that mindset, getting them involved in this, showing them that it's, it's really not a huge cost for a very large investment in the property to protect children from being lead poisoned. I think that's probably key to make this grant successful. But also, the past 10 years, the county's been doing what they call a primary prevention program for lead poisoning. And that's just been focused in the city of Jamestown. So we've got a large database of mostly rental properties in Jamestown that, that do have lead. And a lot of those still do have lead hazards. So a lot of those properties can be funneled into this grant and make those properties lead safe as well. The primary prevention program uses what we call interim controls, just making hazardous surfaces lead safe by scraping in a lead-safe manner, priming and painting surfaces. We didn't have enough money to replace windows or doors. But with this program, this grant, the properties will be made permanently lead safe through abatement. That's replacing the doors, windows, other components, covering maybe outside walls with siding. So it's, you know, it's a great program. It's, you know, what I've seen in, you know, different housing programs, it's the best bang for the buck for any landlord. The city can't really match that kind of a program, a 20% cost share, or even less, if that's, if that's the way it's going to work out. So I'm all in favor of it. Sign a letter of support.
It sounds like a great program also. I was excited too about reading, you know, reading about this, hearing it. And know what the passion is about the lead. And, you know, and so this is just a great tool to help us. I mean, it's 120 to 150, but that's, that's a lot. And it's more than what we've been doing. So kudos.
Well, we're, we are committed to making this a success. And then we could be eligible for higher levels of funding down the road too. So we, we want to do a great job. So, thank you. Any other questions?
Well, you're welcome to stay on if you'd like to. We'll have grants, I mean Brent, who will, we'll get him to chime in where we need to as we're discussing it during our regular work session. But like I said, you're welcome to stay on. Or you can go take care of the dogs.
I did. I wanted to know, when does the grant application go in and when will you find out? I guess, what's the targeted start date?
It's, it's a really fast turnaround this time. So it's about 30 days. It's due August 24th. We hope to be ready to have everything submitted on August 20th. And they expect to be notifying in late September, very early October.
Oh, wow. That's great. No, that's great. That's a, thank you. I wanted to, I wasn't quite sure of the timeframe. So you'd be looking to start relatively soon.
Right. And we're, we're awarded that first, you know, first few months of that is the getting people on board and getting contracts in place and that sort of thing. But we really, we really want to hit the ground running. And we've got, you know, like I said, we've been talking to a lot of property owners. We've been talking with contractors. So we hope that we're funded and ready to go.
Yeah, I was, I was just thinking, now how does COVID-19 come to play with, with this also? How would you, you know, just made me think about that, you know?
Well, we, I can tell you that we have started doing lead inspections again at the county. We have a little bit of a backlog. A lot of families weren't bringing kids in for testing. So, you know, we weren't getting all the referrals that we normally get, but it is starting to build up pretty quickly again. So I, you know, your guess is as good as mine as far as what's going to transpire over the next six, eight months or longer. But we're just hoping that we would be, you know, ready to go with the normal precautions that we follow at the health department.
Thank you.
And one thing with the timeframe, as Lisa said, the applications do the 24th. We don't have a voting session until the 31st. And so if we can get some kind of consensus during the full work session to support this grant application, I think we can get a letter out, you know, in a timely manner at that point.
Okay.
So we'd be requesting two separate things, the letter of support from council and then a letter of commitment from the Department of Development. And I've been talking with Crystal about that. We should have that kind of firmed up in the next day or two.
Okay, sounds great. We're behind you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time and I look forward to continuing to work with all of you.
All right. Thank you. Good night.
Night.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so next, we, we've asked Crystal to kind of give us an update on the CDVG Rental Assistance Program and upcoming demos and the status of the zombie properties, properties grant.
Yep.
So Ms. Crystal, you're up.
Thank you. So we are at the end of our funding for the CDVG COVID Relief Grant that we got from HUD. That is assuming that all of the applications that we have that are still being processed. It's, there's quite a number of documents that go with each application. So Stephanie Wright is, she's been administering that whole process. She did the pre-screening for all of the applications. So she's making her way through those applications that we've received. And if each one is, is awarded, then we will be completely out of, out of our funds, which is a good thing because that means we've, we've helped a number of people. So with the CDVG, the Small Business Grant, just, just to kind of recap, there were two parts to the, the CDVG COVID Relief Funds. There was the Small Business Grant and then the Rental Assistance Grants. So between the two, the Small Business Grants, we allocated $528,700. And for the Rental Assistance, $71,300. If you remember, a couple of weeks ago, we were having a hard time getting Rental Assistance applications in. Once that word got out, that changed pretty quickly. So we did get an influx of applications, which is great. So that brings us to $600,000 in CDVG funding that we've been able to award. Before I move on to demos, are there any questions on that?
How many rentals did that include, Crystal, for the rent?
There's 28 that have been awarded, but there are still a number that are being processed.
And then the Small Business?
Go ahead, Maria.
The Small Business was 27 grants then?
Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Sure. So Crystal, I thought there was 28 awarded. So if the other ones are processed and they are approved, what would that total be then for the rentals?
Let me look here.
Well, that's okay. You can give me that number later.
On different spreadsheets. So they're, and they're all in different phases.
That's okay.
But I'll be happy to report that.
Just to let you know, I, I think some other agencies have gotten some funding for assistance too. So there are other avenues for people. I don't think it's publicly announced yet. So there will be other dollars coming into the community to help with rent. So this is not the end of all rental assistance.
That's right. That's right. And Homes and Community Renewal has released a Rental Assistance Program as well. So that is available at this current time through the state. So it's a, I don't know the link to access it, but if you, if anyone is interested, they can Google Homes and Community Renewal through New York State and they should be able to find that. All right. So demolitions. Let me find my little sheet. I've got to go back to my other screen. Okay. So this week, we've got a number of demolitions that are going out for bid. 851 Spring Street, 857 Spring Street, and 51 Elliott. These are all demolitions that we have partnered with the land bank on. So each year, we have a contract with the land bank to do a number of demolitions. So these are land bank-specific demolitions. They've been on the docket for quite a long time. Kind of have just been hanging out because of COVID. And then I'm sure, as you recall, which we'll talk about in a moment, we had a number of fires that required some emergency demolitions. So going on to cleanups, 31 Thayer and 787 East Second, which, which was the two emergency demolitions on Thayer that had to happen. Those, the cleanups for those are going out to bid this week as well, along with, well, 262 Forest. That was a private owner, had insurance. He's been working with his insurance company. We actually reached out to him, actually today, just to follow up and see where he is in that, that process. So some of the fencing had come down, whether it was people trying to get in or what around the property. So he's going to put that back up and kind of secure it and continue to work with his insurance company to try and get that cleaned up as soon as possible. Yep.
The landlord on East Second Street didn't have insurance?
He did not. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's good to know.
Yeah. And, you know, it's something actually that we've seen fairly often. We hear from landlords that it's really difficult to find insurance for properties that are vacant or don't have any tenants in them at the time. You know, I don't know the insurance world that well. So, you know, I don't know what more can be done to avoid that. But it seems to be a problem that we have, that we're seeing, you know, over and over again.
Thank you.
Then we've got some follow-ups, 718 Cherry Street. There was a fire there. Just some follow-up that needs to happen with the owner. It's, it's an interesting situation. There's a land contract involved. And the, the actual owner is incarcerated. So just trying to work with them through, through that. You know, hopefully we won't have to, you know, pick up the bill at some point in time. But we'll continue to follow, follow up on that and try to get something moving on that because it is, it's boarded. But again, it's, you know, a property that we don't want people breaking into and, and it needs to be addressed. Same with 35 Thayer. So that's the third property on Thayer Street that was involved in that, that three-house fire. That does belong to a gentleman. So we've been in communication with him as well. He does have insurance. He's working through his insurance company. Another one of those scenarios where it had been vacant for a period of time, but it was rentable. So he's kind of back and forth with his insurance company to, you know, one, determine if it's going to be demolished or if it's going to be repaired. So we'll continue to work with him on that as well. And then Vicki had asked for an update on the Zombie Grant Program. So Ben Haskin is here with us and he is actually the facilitator of the Zombie Grants and has been working very hard. So I'll let Ben go ahead and fill you in on that.
All right. So I guess to preface everything, it's been a pretty strange time in terms of administering a zombie grant, especially with all the court closures kind of preventing us the ability to go out and, you know, attack these properties like we would like to. In terms of the work getting done, we have pretty much reached the point where we're ready to file suit on four properties listed under the, the state-provided list of zombie properties. They, the law itself has a very specific definition of the zombie property. It's one that becomes vacant during a foreclosure process. So there are two properties on Prendergast. We have all the pre-suit filing ready for. One on Ivy and one on South Main. Though we have, I have had some contact with the lender on Ivy and they've expressed some interest in, in doing the required work on the property. So might give them a chance to like find a contractor with all the backups before that one specifically gets filed. The other thing that a lot of work has gone into recently in terms of the Zombie Grant, this time around, we agreed we were going to do a property survey, ward by ward, searching for vacant properties that aren't on the DFS list and aren't condemned, which are pretty much the ones we previously were aware of. The order of the wards being searched was completely random. When I was putting together the grant application, I literally texted my girlfriend, said, place the numbers one through six in whatever order you choose. So at this point, we finished Ward Four and Ward Two. We found between them 37 additional vacant properties that weren't on the DFS list or the, or our previously condemned list. That was 23 in Ward Two and 14 in Ward Four. Once- Once Housing Court gets opened back up, we're going to start pursuing those properties pretty vigorously. Also getting ready to send out invitations to another thing that was required under the grant, a vacant property task force. It'll be representatives of the city, of additional nonprofits, and also neighborhood groups. And kind of the dual goal is to collaborate with the nonprofit partners to better leverage our resources in tackling these zombie properties or vacant properties, I guess, just more generally. And also to get community feedback on which of these properties is really the one causing the most issues in in the neighborhoods across the city. I think it's important to have that kind of citizen input in kind of setting up our priorities. So we're just continuing forward with the work under it and I can answer any and all questions anyone would have.
Any questions?
I know you've just, hang on. You have 37 in these two wards. That's probably small compared to the citywide. What do you know about citywide numbers for zombies?
So.
Have on the list. I know you don't. You haven't surveyed them all, but.
We have about 75 condemned properties. So those are just spread across all the wards. And as of Monday, when I last checked, the DFS list has 43 zombie listed properties on it. So we've got over 100 there, plus the additional ones that were found in the survey. I'm currently working on the survey of Ward Six. I've got about a dozen slam dunk, definitely abandoned ones. And then when you're doing the survey, you kind of have ones you question. You have to do a little bit more digging, so I've started working on the on the digging there. But I I don't want to make a guess on how many abandoned properties I'll find in the additional ward surveys, just because there was such a variance between Ward Four and Ward Two. So I don't, I don't, I don't really know how that's going to play out ward to ward. But I mean, we've we've definitely got a significant amount of properties that are vacant and abandoned in the city. And my my fear is with how things are, that's only going to continue to grow as time goes on with the potential ending of both eviction and foreclosure kind of suspensions. But I I don't, I don't know that I I can give you an accurate number of what the end result's going to be after all the ward surveys are completed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And I hope that you my, I'm having trouble with my internet and so it knocked me off and then and so I'm hoping. But so but I just, I relinquish this to Councilman Tony Dose if there's no other questions.
Thank you. We'll go back. If there's any other questions during, you can give a recap to the people who may have missed parts of the housing meeting, give a brief synopsis. If there's any other questions, we can go from there. So I'd like to call the work session of the Jamestown City Council, August 10th meeting to order tonight. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Sheldon?
Here.
James?
Here.
Okay, Caruba?
Here.
Graham Reinhart?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Eklund?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
And President Dose?
Here, thank you. Was there any comments or correspondence from the public this evening?
No, there was nothing.
Nothing, okay. Thank you. If not, we'll move on to our reports from our standing committees and we'll start with Councilwoman Eklund and the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have four resolutions on our agenda tonight.
Can you mute me?
Hello?
I'm here.
Okay.
I was waiting for that to stop. First resolution is to suspend the hiring freeze and authorizing the filling of four full-time police officers in the Jamestown Police Department. Retirement's funded in the 2020 budget. Three of those positions are retirements. The fourth one is a resignation. I don't know if Chief Jackson has anything he wants to add to that.
I do not.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Just a quick question on the timetable on, do we have a certain time when we're going to be filling this? How quickly?
We have an interview scheduled for this Thursday for one of the candidates.
All candidates? Okay.
One of the candidates.
One candidate, okay.
And I had a question also. It had also listed it would be hiring for Chiefs, you know, the chief. So I was wondering, are you going to be hiring? Who's going to be doing that hiring for the chief? Because that was included, or did I just read it wrong? Because it said that.
Vicki, it's a backfill position. It's a backfill, so they'll, they have to refill the that position with an officer. It's a backfill position. They can't, it's not for the chief's position. It's for an officer.
Got it. Right. It's just a refill of the position.
Yes. In order to meet their minimum manning, okay? Second resolution is refunding the bond resolution dated August 31st, 2020, authorizing the issuance of refunding serial bonds of the City of Jamestown, State of New York, pursuant to Section 90.10 of the Local Finance Law of the State of New York, providing for other matters and making certain determinations in relation thereto, and providing for the payment of the bonds to be refunded. Basically, in a quick shot, and I'll have Ryan add if he wants. The City of Jamestown periodically goes out for refinancing because of lower interest rates and to save the city money, and that is the case in this one. If you guys all read your backup, it's going to be about 14,000 after this year. Is it like 11 for the remainder of this year, I think, Ryan, if I'm correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So we'll be saving 11,000 the rest of this year and 14 in the years going forward. But Ryan, feel free to chime in, add anything, and then if anyone has any questions on this.
That's correct. So the total fiscal, the total savings over the life of refunding would be $97,600. The original borrowing was for some DPW parks and fire equipment, some work at the Tracy Plaza and then the central garage we have. So just given the current low interest rates, where our fiscal advisor identified an opportunity to refund this series of bonds.
Thank you very much to you and them. Anybody else have any questions on that? Okay, the next one is a resolution authorizing the city comptroller to make the following amendment to the 2020 general fund budget for the purpose of paying an unexpected asbestos removal costs associated with the Smart Cities Heating Cooling Project. Increase City Hall maintenance, 8.1620.457 appropriations by $24,680 and decrease contingency, 8.1990.0400 appropriations of 248680. And as I stated, it's asbestos removal that were unplanned. But Jeff and Ryan, if you two want to add anything else?
I'll just add that we still would have 351,000 remaining in the contingency account after this adjustment. You know, Jeff, if you have anything else to add?
I think the asbestos removal speaks for itself. It's, needs to be done. Clean it up, City Hall. We've been doing these jobs like this ongoing for about the past 10, 15 years.
Perfect.
I just had a quick question about that for Jeff. Was the asbestos located around the, was it encasing the boilers? Is that, is that where it was located at?
It was, there's two different places we found it. One was actually inside the boiler. It was like a claw king inside the boiler. So there was no way to know, even when we found it, we weren't sure how much was there until we did a little more research on it. And then some of it was above the boiler system in an area that our understanding wasn't, it wasn't asbestos. And when we got the boilers pulled out, we tested it again and it was.
So there was no chance, there was no employees that were exposed to this possibly during the during the flood that took place?
No, no.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? Okay, then the last resolution out of finance is authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with CGI Communications Incorporated, 130 East Main Street, 5th floor Rochester, New York, 14604 to produce video content for the city at no cost for a period of three years, subject to the approval as to form by the Corporation Council. Zach, I don't know if you wanted, this is your baby. I don't know if you want to add in anything?
Yeah, it's a, through a partnership in NICOM, this company CGI Communications is offering free video content and create a unique video content for cities in New York for free. All we have to do is put a link on our website and we'll highlight, you know, local attractions, businesses. So it's, it's pretty good. We'll send a videographer up. We don't have to do any work for it. So it's be good professional quality video on our website.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Then the only thing coming out of finance, President Dose, is I believe Corporation Council has two items for executive session for claims. Correct, Elliot? Just two?
That is correct.
Thank you.
That it for financing?
That's it. Yep.
Then we'll move on to housing. I know housing had a separate meeting, but Vicki, if you wanted to give a brief report on, I know you had a guest speak and you had some other things going on in there. So if you wanted to give a report on that, if there's any other questions regarding some of the issues that came out of housing tonight, so. Go ahead, Vicki, if you want.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been kicked off for like three times. Already since then, so if jump in, yes, we had Lisa, community consultant from Chautauqua County Department of Health and Human Services. They came and presented a, the county is looking to get a $3 million grant being sought for the span of 32 months or three and a half years for lead hazard control to benefit lower income families where children are present. The application deadline is 24. And they are for the grant. Oh, my screen, I don't know if I'm freezing up.
Yeah. The grant will be submitted on August 20th and it's due the 24th. I'm trying to help you out, Vicki. We're having trouble, your mic.
But yeah, the deadline is August 24th and it will be submitted August 24th. That's what I had, well, okay, well, anyway, it's when it's going to be. And and the turnaround is going to be fairly quickly. They should be notified if they receive it on September. And one of the good things about this, they're looking at doing 120 to 150 homes and they will be doing and renters will be allowed to get in this window and door replacements.
Ray, if you want to jump in and help out?
Yeah, I would be glad to. I don't know if my mic's okay. They're planning to do 120 to 150 homes in a three and a half year span. They'll be partnering with Chautauqua Opportunities. They feel that they would be better able to provide some of the information on means testing because this is low income based. And with that, they would probably do doors and windows. The landlords would have a $500 application fee, but with that, they would get total replacement of windows and doors. So it's pretty cost effective. Differ significantly from the other program that preceded this that the county had where there was a 20% match by the landlords. So they were asking for a letter of support from the council and a letter of commitment, and that would be needed before we meet again because our voting session would take place after the application was due. And I think that summarized it. And I apologize, Councilwoman James, your microphone cut in and out and we couldn't hear anything after a certain point. So I apologize if I took your, took your place here to give the information.
I would just add, these homes or units will be in the Jamestown area that are going to be made lead safe for the children, to protect our children. So I think this is a worthwhile thing to have a letter of support. There is going to be a small cost share, I believe, with the department development. I don't know if Crystal wants to add on that part.
Sorry, took me a second to unmute. Yeah, so our cost share would would really just be providing matching funds that we already provide through our CDBG and our home programs. So it it really would be more about coordination with COI in the county. We wouldn't be necessarily allocating anything additional outside of what our programs would already allow us to allocate. So it's really about being able to coordinate our efforts to make sure that we're leveraging each other so that we can have a larger impact citywide.
You also indicated that the number of homes we have in the city, the number of older homes built prior to 1978 when lead paint or lead paint was was banned or no longer produced. But the numbers, and I wish I could think of, she said, how many more children have tested positive in the year? I thought it was over 100, but I can't remember the exact number.
It was over 100.
Yeah, yeah. So this would be an attempt to try to prevent that along with the prevention programs that are offered through a number of organizations. Because in the end, any of these children who become lead poisoned really have a lot of issues ongoing throughout their life. So you can pay now and try to remediate and help prevent, or you're going to pay later in terms of the conditions and the impact that will have on their health and their life going forward, so.
Yeah, can cause learning disabilities, lower child's IQ, and therefore can lower their earning potential over their life. They've also seen higher incarceration rates of children as they become older who have lead poisoning of child.
Yeah, and the cost of education and the cost ongoing if they're not able to support themselves because of the disabilities is, you know, never, they never get out of there. So we thought it was good.
And the, yeah. And the $500 flat application fee, it seems to be pretty low when you think of you're going to be getting new doors and windows and possible siding into your home also, so for the homeowners. So if there's any questions regarding that, comments? If not, we're going to ask Crystal to come back and and again, I'm going to ask my colleagues because I've been, I don't know what's wrong with my internet, it just keeps popping off and popping in. So if Crystal, if you can come up and just give us a, an update on the rental assistance program, the upcoming demos, and I believe Zach, if you can chime in on the zombie property grant. Crystal?
Sure. Actually, it will be Ben that will join us for the zombie property update.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. So with regard to the CDVG COVID rental assistance, along with the CDVG Small Business Relief Grants, we have reached a point where we've expended all of our funding. The small business grants are five hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars that we've awarded to twenty-seven different businesses locally. We are still processing through the rental assistance applications that we have. But if all of those, of all the documentation that, that we're looking to, to get from tenants who have applied, if, if all of that documentation is supplied, there will be seventy-one thousand three hundred dollars in grants awarded. For a total of six hundred thousand dollars, which is the full amount that we were allocated to be able to award. With regard to demolitions, we've got a number of, of demolitions that are, are in somewhere in the process. So eight fifty-one and eight fifty-seven Spring Street will both be going out to bid this week along with fifty-one Elliott Street. I mentioned earlier, these three properties have been in the queue for some time. They were sort of put on hold, if you will, due to the COVID situation. Along with the number of fires that required emergency demolitions since the beginning of the year. So we are trying to get back to business and, and trying to push forward with things that have been on the docket. Cleanups, we've got thirty-one Thayer and seven eighty-seven East Second. So those were part of those emergency demolitions that I just spoke about. Due to fire. So those will also be going out to bid along. So the cleanup for those, let me clarify, sorry. For those will be going out to bid this week. Also, two sixty-two Forest Avenue, just as a follow-up, that was an emergency demolition. That property is privately owned, there was insurance on the property. So we've just been working with the homeowner to keep that process moving along and get that cleaned up as soon as possible. They have to work through their insurance company, so you can imagine that, that, that hits some, some timing snags, but we'll continue to work with them and try to get that taken care of quickly. So additional follow-up, seven eighteen Cherry Street, there was a fire. Again, a very interesting situation with the owner of the property, there was a land contract involved. So just trying to work with the, the folks who are involved in that and get some sort of resolution, whether it be a demolition or a, a repair, which I think would be quite costly. Thirty-five Thayer Street, that was involved in the, the three-house fire. So that is a private owner, also working through insurance, so it's taking some time. Again, remains to be seen whether it will be a demolition or a repair. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So Ben, could you give us a, not state, a, a design, a grant?
All right. So I'm going to try to go through it a little quicker than I did earlier. Work is continuing. Courts being largely closed is complicating some of it. We have put together pre-suit notice on four properties listed as zombies by the state, two on Prendergast, one on Ivy and one on South Main. Those will be going out soon and then assuming no action, suit will be filed. The lender at the Ivy Street pop property has reached out in regards to potentially wanting to complete the necessary work there. So we'll probably hold off a little bit longer on the suit just to give them time to find a contractor, because a lot of them have been backed up pretty, pretty far in terms of their scheduling. We have been under the grant doing ward by ward surveys for vacant properties that aren't zombie listed or condemned, which we were previously aware of. I've completed the surveys in Ward Four and Ward Two and found between them thirty-seven additional vacant properties. Fourteen in Ward Four, twenty-three in Ward Two. We're aware of what work needs to be done to try to get some action going on those. But we're pretty limited to just hoping for the best until Code Enforcement Court gets started back up. And we will soon be sending out invitations to a vacant property task force that will include nonprofits that also tend to work in the housing area in the region. And also neighborhood groups with, I guess, the dual goals, as they were written under the grant proposal of leveraging resources better to combat these vacant properties citywide. And also getting citizen feedback on which of the vacant and abandoned properties are causing the most troubles in their neighborhoods, so we can kind of prioritize action on those based on, on, on citizen feedback. And unless there's any questions, I think that's about all I need to say.
And just to note that there's, right now, there's over a hundred vacant, condemned properties in the city. And he hasn't even completed all the wards surveys, so it's true. And we thank you for your work. And if there's nothing else, or if there's no other comments or questions, we'd like to turn it back over to President Scott.
Thank you. That concludes housing. We'll move on to Public Safety and Councilman Sheldon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having an ordinance establishing Article twelve of Chapter two ninety of the Jamestown City Code entitled Owner Liability for Failure of Vehicle Operator to Stop for a School Bus Displaying a Red Visual Signal and Stop Arm. The city has a large problem with school bus passings. People go past the school bus when the arms extended and the red lights are flashing. That's a vehicle and traffic violation. This endangers the lives of our students of Jamestown. And last year, I believe, there were some changes in New York State law that allows municipalities to adopt an ordinance to enforce stop arm camera violations. So a few weeks ago, there was a meeting between some city officials, myself and some of the Jamestown Public School officials to discuss this with a group called Bus Patrol. And they were supposed to present some information on this today, but unfortunately the representative had an emergency. But the executive assistant Zach had been working on this and I don't know, Zach, if you want to jump in and say a few things about this before? We have the presentation, the presentation will actually be in two weeks, but we want to get this on people's minds and start to look at this.
Sure, thank you, Councilman Sheldon. Essentially, this is a program like Councilman Sheldon said, of the state authorized cities to take in on their own. Essentially allowing them to enforce stop arm camera violations with engaging with, with companies that do so. Essentially, it is two hundred and fifty dollars for the first violation, then goes up by twenty-five dollars up to for third violation, if that occurs within eighteen. This company, Bus Patrol, contacted our office and JPS as well. And engaged us in some conversations about doing this essentially. And there'll be more information on this in two weeks during the next work session. But essentially, they installed these cameras that are automatic currently. I know some of the JPS school buses do have some stop arm cameras, but they're manual. So the driver has to be really looking for it and react when a car is passing, when the stop arm is extended. So this is a really good time to do this. Essentially, the company's Bus Patrol also provides the school system with free bus route planning software that the school system already pays for. So this is a really good savings for both the school system and a potential revenue generator for us. Most importantly, protecting students here in the city of Jamestown. Any questions that everyone has?
I'm going to give any idea how many school buses this would, you know, that the city or that the school district has?
I believe it's about fifty. And, and we'll get the final confirmed. Essentially, what has to happen first is that we need to pass this ordinance first, then we can engage in a company that does, provides stop arm cameras for school buses. And hopefully in a couple of weeks, the CEO of Bus Patrol should be joining us to give a presentation. He'll kind of explain how the system works. Free of charge to the city and the school districts. So it seems to be one of the best options that we have. So, so it should be about fifty, fifty buses that it would be installed on.
Well, that's, it's, that's great. I, you have my full support. I, I think it's, you know, unthinkable that someone would have a school bus that's, the red lights are flashing.
It happens quite a bit.
I was shocked at the numbers to read, I, I couldn't believe it, that happens that often.
Yeah.
I see it just a lot every morning during the school year. It happened at least once on my way to, on my way to school.
Yeah.
Definitely a problem. So we'll have that presentation in two weeks.
That's correct. Any more questions? Save those for two weeks. Okay, the next thing I have is a local law providing for rezoning of tattoo parlors. Current code restricts locating tattoo parlors to zoning districts C M, L M and M, which is commercial mercantile or manufacturing, light manufacturing, manufacturing. It's been brought to attention of several city departments, commissions, the tattoo parlors are not deemed incompatible use in the zoning district C four, C three, C two and C one and RC, the commercial districts. And they should be permitted in these districts. We have had in the past a couple of tattoo artists wanting to locate in the city of Jamestown and they have been denied by the zoning board because of the, the pretty restrictive zoning. Apparently that restriction went into play in nineteen sixty-nine, but I do know there have been at least two, actually three, three tattoo parlors in the city of Jamestown. And then one was right downtown on Cherry Street. And that, that was one of the first ones that I remember when I worked for the Health Department, I used to inspect that facility. And, you know, I thought that was an appropriate location for it, it was written, written in the downtown district. But we do have somebody who would like to locate downtown. If Elliot, if you want to have anything else to add to that?
Hi, Councilman Sheldon. Myself and Corporation Council Haskin were working on this diligently this week. And it was prompted by an individual, she originally had applied Denise Dale Serta for a permit. It was denied by the zoning board, which followed up, zoning board of appeals, which followed up with the planning commission as well as the administration regarding changes to the city code. We looked at some comparable cities and found that tattoo parlors are not incompatible with the central business district and the other commercial districts.
I have a question, oh, sorry.
I, I don't know if Ben probably has something to add here.
I, I guess I'll just add on a little bit. I could only find, I looked through about forty-five other city codes statewide. And there's only one other municipality that zones them as restrictive as us, and that would be the city of Hornell. And prompted by a discussion I had maybe about a week and a half ago with Councilman Sheldon, inquired about kind of restrictions on, on where they can be placed within zoning areas. I, I also looked through these codes for those and found basically two kinds of restrictions that, that have generally been put in place. The most common is one that is a space restriction between tattoo parlors. So you could only have one tattoo parlor for every either two hundred or five hundred feet. They were pretty consistent, those were the only two distances that were ever used. And then the only other restriction that I, I, I found was limiting them from being within two hundred feet of a school or public park. So I just wanted to briefly mention that, just based purely on my previous conversation with Councilman Sheldon.
I just have a question. Councilman Sheldon, you mentioned something that happened and, you know, that, that was put on zoning in nineteen sixty-nine, is that what you said? And then?
Correct, yes, nineteen sixty-nine. Photo was changed.
Okay, and I was talking with Crystal the other day and I just, I guess I just wonder, I, I don't know who sits on the zoning board or whatever. I just wonder how many of the things that have been put on the books may need to be revisited? Or are they only revisited when the situation comes up? I, I understand that a variance had to be given for someone to try to open a bakery or something like that, but I wasn't, you know, it just seemed kind of like we made some changes years ago and now we're trying to kind of go back. I don't know, I'm just curious as to when we start to look at those things that have been put in the code or in the zoning laws? And how often does that keep us from being a little bit more progressive?
Emru, I can answer that. I know that over the course of several years, we, we've changed certain areas of the city as times have changed, not necessarily the specific businesses, but certain areas, whether they be commercial, residential, manufacturing. So there has been a constant ongoing change over the years. I'll give you an example. Up on North Main Street, that was switched several years ago where Tim Hortons is, from a residential to a, I believe, RC, residential commercial. And I'm, and there's other examples throughout the city where as things have changed and time has gone on, you know, I know that over the course of years, can't remember when the last time we had a complete re-hall, I guess, of the, the entire city. That's something that it's very cumbersome and, and time consuming. But most of the time, you are correct, it probably is when something comes up, an issue comes up and then we have to take a look at it, revisit it.
Okay, thanks. I just, I just wasn't sure how that worked. Because I know this has come before zoning in the past, and so does it kind of go and get turned down and then come back? Or just wasn't sure how long the process takes.
I think in this case with the, you know, I'm, I'm not on the, I don't know all the specifics of the zoning. They try to obviously, they have to go by the current zoning laws. And when, when people come in for a variance and then it, you know, there's going to be a pro and a con and there's going to be people for it, people against it. And so by, you know, changing the code, that then removes the reason for them to have to get a variance for it. So, you know, Elliot, you can jump in and I don't know how much research you've done in the history of it, but that's kind of, you know, the way it's been, the way I've seen it over the years here.
But does it kind of, you know, after listening to this conversation, does it make sense to have the zoning board going to kind of go through it and see if there's any recommendations that they could have? You know, because, you know, when you talk about nineteen sixty-nine, I mean, life has changed a little bit since then. And just kind of be proactive and maybe that's something that, an exercise that they could just go through and make some recommendations to us?
They, they can, I, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody jump in, but I know it works this way. I was on the zoning board several years ago before I was on council. And we were told that the council really shouldn't, they're kind of an independent board and, and it's a unique relationship between the zoning board. They're kind of an independent board, and it's a unique relationship between the zoning board. I guess they could give recommendation to us. What we we were told back then was that the council really shouldn't be influencing the zoning board. The zoning board is they should be able to act on their own. And that our only really authority over the zoning board would be to actually change the ordinance like we are looking at right here. But when you go into individual, you know, variances for different things. You might have a council person who says, no, I don't want this in my area. My people don't want it, and or yes, they do. And so it's kind of an awkward relationship between what the zoning board legally can and can't do versus what the council can influence influence them to do.
I wasn't, you know, I didn't, I guess I'm, I wasn't looking for them to ask for influence them, just to kind of give us some recommendations. Because we would have to vote on it anyway for the change. And so, you know, because they, you know, they're on the committee, they are closer what's, you know, the zoning was on the books than, you know, we are until something happens. And then this is a way to be kind of proactive.
They're enforcing what what public safety and that is in charge of ordinance amendments and all that stuff. So that would be a task for the Public Safety Committee, I would think. Correct me if I'm wrong, Tony. And I think it would be hugely cumbersome. I'm not saying it shouldn't be done, but I I I agree that there's probably some things that need updated, but how do you pick them out of a book this thick? Until until someone.
Something happens.
The Councilwoman James's point, I guess if we're looking at the minutes and reviewing what the zoning board is taking action on would give us a pretty good idea of the cases that are coming before the zoning board and what people are looking for. So it may be the number of cases in terms of what types of variances people are applying for would give us a pretty good idea where it's not working maybe, and that we need to take a look at those provisions. I think that's going to be our, and you're right, President Dulce, about the independence of the zoning board. We are not here to influence them. They have to carry out what policy and ordinances that we set, so. But on the basis, and having just gone through that with the Gateway Lofts project, where it was a back and forth with the zoning board and, you know, they had to keep going in front of the zoning board on multiple occasions to to change the project. You know, or excuse me, the planning commission and the zoning board for the variance. I think that's where probably we need to start. I agree. I don't think we have the time that we can go through a whole a whole throw everything out or do redo everything at this point, but I think it's certainly worth taking a look at the most common variance requests.
Most of it, this is a unique situation, I think, with the with this type of business. And again, you know, nineteen sixty nine was a long time ago, and, you know, the culture's changed, and, you know, I would say that, you know, fifty years ago, most people probably didn't have tattoos and didn't have body piercings, and that's something that's, you know, become part of the culture over the last, you know, quarter of a century or so. But, you know, having said that, I think most of the zoning board, the work that comes before them are neighborhood issues and, you know, building of garages and fences and pools and things that are pretty routine. So when people go in and look for a variance, basically, you have to remember a variance means you're someone is asking the zoning board for permission to do something that either isn't currently allowed or, you know, stretches the limit of the legal zone. So again, it's it's kind of a case by case situation. But this case, you're right. You're right, Vicky, this case, you know, this is a certain case where, again, times have changed, and, you know, we don't want to discourage business and within, obviously, within within reason, you know, looking at what we can can do to, you know, update our codes and ordinances. And this is a perfect example, the Public Safety Committee. This is how it's done. They look at it. The zoning board would then wouldn't have to go back and have to have this kind of discussion, because if it's already on the books, we put it on the books, then it's a moot point, and the business can go ahead and and open up.
Just getting back to tattoo parlors. In nineteen sixty nine, there were no codes and health regulations about tattoo parlors tattooing. The state Health Department, as far as I know, still has not passed any rules or regulations. The county Health Department did about twenty years ago. So all the tattoo artists and tattoo studios all have to be licensed and inspected by the county Health Department. So, you know, most of these places are doing a great job. The biggest problem I find is when people are tattooing illegally out of their homes and tattooing children, which is illegal. So you know, as Tony mentioned, times have changed, you know, tattoos and body piercing is more part of our culture. Having in our downtown entertainment district, in arts district, I don't have a problem with it.
And again, it's a great point, Brent, that and now it's 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 more controlled and regulated, and, you know, it's a it's a situation where you know, we don't want to encourage people to do it in their house. You want to have it done in a professional business setting where there are regulations and safety, safety features put in.
President Dulce. If I could, if I could just jump in for Councilwoman James, I I agree with you. I think that's something that I have said over and over that we do want to look at our zoning code. Overall, we have a zoning code still from the nineteen sixties, and many cities our size have moved to updated zoning regulations that focus more on the use and less about restrictive zoning areas. There is very costly to engage a consultant to revitalize that code, to change that code. I'm happy to have Crystal go through that process and look at consultants, and then we'll send the bill to the city council and see how much that. But I do want to.
That was my point.
Yeah, but I do want to allow Crystal, if you wouldn't, if you wouldn't indulge me just a minute to talk a bit about it, as she works very closely with the zoning board as well as the planning board.
Thank you. Something I wanted to just mention was that the zoning board actually came to the planning commission after they denied the initial tattoo parlor variance request. I believe it was last fall and requested that the planning commission actually take a look at that. So I believe that the process would actually be initiated through the planning commission. Planning Commission would make a recommendation, and just to let all of you know. At the next planning commission meeting is August eighteenth, so this will be on the agenda for discussion. The planning commission at the time was very open to looking at this, and so the next commission meeting, a recommendation will be made one way or another, and then referred back to council. We just wanted to make sure that it was in front of you tonight, so that it was you know, up for discussion and you had all the information ahead of time. Additionally, with regard to the zoning board. It is, I think it is a planning commission initiative to take on a new zoning code, so it's definitely a priority for our department. Obviously, we've been been working on other things and and had our plates full, but it's certainly a priority, and it's something that we'll continue to look into. You know, with with CFA applications not being something that are happening this year, and we're not quite sure when those that application process will kick back in. It's something that we may have to put on the back burner, but it does remain a priority. It will be a significant undertaking, but it's something that would be a joint effort with the planning commission, my department. And, you know, a consultant team that would be hired to do so. Thank you.
Brent, anything else from?
Okay. Under information reports. Councilman Russell brought up the possibility of our police detectives wearing body cameras. So we have report here from Acting Chief Jackson about this. Well, I just turn that over to him, and you can present it and answer any questions.
Thank you, Councilman Sheldon. I believe council has a copy of the current body worn camera that policy that's been agreed upon by the Kendall Club Union. The new areas are highlighted in red or should be highlighted in red on everyone's copy. We currently have forty four body cams in service. In order to outfit the entire department, we need sixty four, and that would include three spares. Any any questions on that?
Just apparently, there's been some issues with the current body cams that we have. There's been some problems.
There have been some some issues with the safety vision cameras. However, to outfit the entire department with the Panasonic ones that are recommended is eighty six thousand dollars. And and I disagree with spending that much money for the body cams. I would rather, there's another option in here to purchase body cams just to make up the difference in shortage. I would prefer to do that.
And that would be twenty body cams of nineteen thousand six hundred dollars.
Correct.
And they would be the same brand names that you have now, correct, in order to save money?
Those those are actually for the Panasonic ones, the cost that the nineteen thousand six hundred. I'm currently looking at the cost for the safety vision cameras, which would be the same ones we have now. Which they would probably be cheaper than that. Is we currently have safety vision cameras, body cams.
Ryan, have you discussed where this funding is coming from?
No, not yet. We had a budget meeting actually today, and it could be something that we would potentially put into the budget for twenty twenty one. So we get some preliminary discussion.
But I'm understanding, Tim, you would you would want these sooner than later.
Correct.
Probably have a chance to see if there's any grant money out there at this point.
I've not looked at that.
I I know Chief Snellings, at the time we got these originally, that was a tough call. I'm not saying there isn't, but I know he had a hard time looking for it then.
Council, Councilmember Eklund. You add to that. We have their grant funding for body cams. Federal funding was removed this year and will most likely be removed next year. The chief and I have talked about whether that funding should come from contingency or whether that could potentially come from asset forfeiture. We are looking into that, and there's obviously.
That was going to be my recommendation. Thank you.
No resolutions required at this time. We're still looking into it, but I believe the chief wanted to make sure he got got back to you all from the discussion last work session.
I just had a quick question. The issues that you were having with the body cams now, is it because of the the product, or is, you know, because you're going to be buying the same? You know, the same for that which you have now, or is it just something that is just a problem, you know, technical problem or whatever?
Councilwoman James, the the problems that they're talking about are like downloading and issues like that, technical issues, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question about the exceptions when executing a search warrant that the body cameras would not be used during no knock warrants, nighttime search warrants, forensic evidence collection, search warrants, and where property has already been seized or in police custody of control. That that's currently in the the order right now, correct?
That 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 was added to the body.
Okay, yes. Can you explain why, especially the no knock warrants? They wouldn't be wearing a body camera or using the body camera at that point?
Those are typically done for safety reasons. Number one, wearing them would be difficult. No knock warrants are typically done by a SWAT team in emergency or drug, something to that effect.
That phrase no knock warrant has really, you know, gotten to people's minds after the Breonna Taylor murder on Louisville.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm concerned about that one. Because, yeah, there was no body cam footage from that from what I'm aware of. But that's typical, though, in most police departments, would you say?
Correct. Yes.
Do we do a lot of no knock warrants?
We haven't done a lot this year.
That that one kind of made me a little nervous, too, after, you know, Breonna Taylor, you know. I understand the reasoning, but oh, wow. You know.
How many no knock warrants would be typical? You know, how many on average? Would the city conduct in a year? I know you said we haven't done many, but what would a typical average be?
I would say it could range from twelve to twenty four.
And those are thoroughly searched, because, you know, when you when you think about Breonna, that one was, it just seemed like it was a lot of human error that caused that situation. So I'm but I'm sure you guys, you know, you're professionals and that the proper information, you have the proper information when you are executing that.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman James, I can.
I'm not really know what I'm really, what I wanted to say, you know, I just wanted to make sure that you know, because it seemed like in Breonna Taylor, that was a lot of, it seemed like human error in there. So with ours, I just would hate to see, you know, something like that happen here. But human error, and I'm just going to, I'm giving you the benefit that you guys are professionals, and if you make sure that you have the correct information before this is executed.
Absolutely.
Just for the just for the, just for the record. I served on the SWAT team with Chief Jackson and executed in my career hundreds of no knock warrants. Obviously, the concern not using a no knock warrant is if you're trying to if you're going after drugs, it's give someone the time to flush and get rid of all the drugs. Or the other concern is is an officer safety issue. If you are knocking on the door and you're announcing yourself, then that gives can give someone inside the house the opportunity to obtain a weapon and possibly start shooting at the SWAT team when they do enter, enter the residence. And obviously, like Councilwoman James said, I mean, it comes down to training and professionalism. And I have the utmost confidence in Chief Jackson in that training of his SWAT team.
Thank you, Councilman Russell.
All right. So I guess there will be more discussion on this in the future, especially when we figure out if we're going to buy all new body cams or just buy twenty additional cameras and how they're going to be paid for.
I'm sure when the decision is ready to be made, it will be a finance discussion as to where the monies come from, so.
Absolutely.
Some things never change, Vicky.
I'll know that.
Okay, the final item on public safety is. Okay, the final item on public safety is a block party application by some guy named Tom Nelson on Hunter Street.
Has he been vetted?
I don't think I've gotten an invitation yet to this block party, but that's okay.
Trust me, it's a pretty low-key event, you know, probably twenty-five people my age sitting in a circle six feet apart, you know, having a hot dog or something. It's, it's not a big deal, but.
Not a drum circle, you're not playing drums or?
No, yeah. My neighbors were, uh, you know, hoping to, that we could continue it, so I said, I, I really don't know.
How many years in a row have you done this thing?
Well, it's only the third year in a row.
Okay.
So it's a pretty.
Six feet apart, right?
It's a pretty cautious group of people and you know, and then, you know, it's like anything, if they feel uncomfortable, they don't, they can like stay home this year. But many of my neighbors been saying, hey, are we gonna do that again? Well.
Yeah, I don't think we've had many applications at all for block parties this year.
I said that, yeah.
Alright, so that is August twenty-second with a rain date of August twenty-third from six P M until ten P M. Any objections to that? Block party is approved. Alright, that's all I have as president.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I didn't receive anything, uh, in the way of Public Works. I don't know if Tom or Jeff, you have anything for Public Works?
Uh, well, I think Jeff wanted to give, uh, maybe a quick summary of what the city crews have been doing. They're working hard, they're, uh, they're busy. And we've had some good weather and, uh, they're getting a lot of, so but I'll let Jeff tell you more about that.
Hey, Mother Nature's been fantastic. Um, we're just about through with the, the work plan that we put forward in the spring. Probably another, another week, we have Holbrook Street to pave at the end of the week, weather permitting. And then a little section on Sprague Street coming down the hill that needs to be paved. And then, as we talked about before, the CHIPS, uh, states more or less finalize what they're gonna give us in CHIPS, that they won't be taking money more than twenty percent back. So we've looked at the next round of, uh, projects that we can hopefully squeeze out this summer, time permitting. Uh, and we, we should actually have the list sometime this week for review Monday night, next Monday night. Like I said, there's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of, uh, new money that we'll be able to use for that. We have three ongoing C D B G projects that are still out there. Newton Street sidewalk and curb ramp improvements. Cary to Thayer, if you drive down there, you'll see that works going on right now. Main Street from Eleventh to Kingsbury, there's some sidewalk improvements that'll be done uh, as part of the Main Street improvements, uh, ongoing project. And then we have one other one that's out to bid right now is Bowen Street, which is a brick street and it'll be getting the curb gutter sidewalks, brick patching, that type of thing. Uh, and that'll, I'm hoping to bring that to you next month.
Which part of Bowen is that?
Uh, that Bowen is, Bowen is from Newton to Price. I don't even know who's asking the question.
I, I was. Was that the part we looked at?
We did look at that, uh, earlier this year, yes.
Thank you. That would be really nice.
What else do we have? Well, the Smart Tourism Transportation Project was, which is the downtown pedestrian directional signage and the new smart meters. As you know, we went out to bid and got no bids on the first bid. So we took it out, put it out to bid again. We opened bids. Uh, we did get two bids, but they were significantly higher than what the engineer's estimate is. And since it's a federally aided project, there's all kinds of hoops and things we need to go through to work with the, the contractor to try to see if it's possible to bring the project back in with the budget, within the budget. Guess the issue was the price of meters went up significantly in the month of May, while we were sitting, waiting through the COVID crisis. So hopefully I'll have something for the next meeting on that one also. What else do we have? The Skateboard Park, uh, as you know, you approved it two weeks ago. Going back and forth with the out-of-town, uh, design build contractor. They're having problems getting in here and, and they don't think that the project could be done this, this fall like we anticipated, and they've come back and asked if we could go through the design process this fall and begin work in the spring. It appears that the Tony Hawk Foundation is good with that. And so hopefully we'll get that tied down for the next meeting also. We have a meeting with them on Wednesday.
Wilson Foundation okay with it too?
Um, actually, we have not talked to them yet, to be honest with you. I mean, they're, they're there, but they're a small part. Crystal might, Crystal's nodding, so maybe that's a good sign.
Yeah, well, I think that, um, that Tony Hawk on behalf of, they, they coordinate specifically with the Ralph Wilson Foundation. Um, and that's the majority of the funding. So we did include Trevor Staples, who is from the Tony Hawk Foundation. He's been involved in conversation, so we've kept him up to date on everything progress-wise, so. I, I, I think based on our last conversation that he was on board with that and, and certainly understood.
Okay, so, thank you.
You. Um, the next item is the, um, improvements being done on City Hall and various city buildings. Demo's underway. As you know, we got into the asbestos, so we are looking to be down for the asbestos removal until I believe the twenty-first. There's other work going on, other demolition, uh, they're running gas services into one forty-five and one fifty-five Steel Streets. That should be either been completed to today or tomorrow morning. Uh, they're running piping through those two buildings to get the gas line or to get the gas boilers on board. Um, we have a meeting Wednesday with a contractor who's gonna be pulling out part of Tracy Plaza. Redo the redecking under the portion that goes under the proposed chillers. That's moving along. Um, and the lighting improvements, there's actually looking at some lighting outside tonight. Which you might catch if they're not already out of here. And they're gonna start work on, on the fourth floor of City Hall tomorrow, retrofitting the existing lights with new, uh, light fixtures. What else? Well, we've also decided that we are gonna put the Lillian Dixon Playground project on hold until next spring, primarily due to the COVID issue. No sense putting a new playground in that we're not gonna let anybody play on. A- and we also wanna get community involvement, uh, in the installation of that, so it seemed like a better idea. And I think that's about it. Have you got any questions?
Jeff, for the Jackson Taylor, the, for the restrooms, is that gonna be put on hold too because of covert? Cause I know the bathrooms are closed at the park, so does it, you know, what's the status of that?
Uh, you broke up a little bit. I think you're talking about the Jack Taylor restrooms?
Yes.
They're currently out to bid. Uh, we should be opening bids, uh, I believe at the end of the week. We'll see what the pricing comes back in on that one.
Thank you.
Busy summer.
I guess that's it for Public Works. Uh, thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
Okay, there, uh, is there any other new business to come for the council tonight before we turn it over to the mayor?
Uh, Mr. President, I just had a comment or concern that I wanted to bring up. Maybe it was, I should have brought it up during housing. Um, I know last time we met, we had voted on the Gateway Loft Project and that mitigation program. I, I just had a quick question or a comment, uh, maybe for either Crystal or Elliot. From what I understand, uh, you know, this, we all know that the city currently retains Sean Bonnack and King, law firm for the police arbitration that's going on, and also the, uh, annexation of the B P U annexation, and we've paid this law firm in excess of, uh, over a half million dollars. The question I have or concern I have is that, uh, Stell is presently using Sean Bonnack and King as their law firm to basically negotiate with the city on this Gateway Loft Project. And I question whether, um, they should be the law firm on this project because, uh, it, it's a conflict of interest. They're presently representing the city on these other matters, and now they're representing Stell. And it's like we're negotiating, uh, against our own law firm, and I just question whether this is even ethical. Maybe, uh, someone could jump in, Mr. Ramondo or Marie or, or someone.
Yes, on my end, I do find it ethical. The Bonn, Chenick and King attorney that represents Stell, Steve Ricker, he is working out of their Buffalo office and he's part of their property development group. Uh, I've never worked with him before, and in the other matters, we've never communicated as far as the police arbitration or the annexation. As far as those other two cases, the annexation, we are working with an attorney out of Syracuse, and I cannot recall her name at the moment.
Kathleen Bennett.
Kathleen Bennett. Uh, while for the police arbitration, we are working with Terry O'Neill and two of his associates who are based out of Garden City, Long Island. Uh, apart from maybe a firm conference per year, I doubt these attorneys ever see each other. I know I've never discussed these matters with Mr. Ricker nor in with me.
Okay, I just found it odd that, you know, the same law firm is representing both sides, uh, in this, in this project, and I know from a, from a criminal standpoint, the attorneys will conflict out for, um, pretty much anything, so that was my only concern.
Of course.
Thank you.
And just the point, yeah, the city's engagement with Bonn, Chenick and King was before the Gateway Lost Project came to be, so if anything, you know, the city engaged that firm long before gateways came up, but I'd agree with, um, Council Ramondo's opinion that they are not the same attorneys and they are operating out of different offices, completely different issues.
I just, I, I just wanna add, just as an F Y I, Jeff, Bonn, Chenick and King is, I just looked it up. They have over two-hundred-and-fifty lawyers in New York State, Boston, Kansas City, Naples, Florida, so they're a national firm, which I think is, is common. You lawyers can also add to this. When you get into those bigger firms, they're gonna have offices across the country in different locations that specialize in different things. So I think that's why we're, it's just a big law firm where you're gonna hear a bunch of attorneys coming out of because of their volume.
Anything else under new business? If not, uh, we'll turn it over to the mayor, Mayor Sunquist, if you have anything for, uh, open session for us or anything else.
I, I do. I promised to be less than three hours, so I will try to hold all my comments in. Surprisingly, I only have, I have one executive, uh, session item regarding a, um, potential lawsuit. So, um, keeping it brief there, um, I do have just a couple department updates I'd like to ask some department heads to, to, um, add in. And I have a couple just general items for the council and for the public. I, for fire, I wanted to see if, uh, Chief Coon could, uh, just briefly give you guys an update on the, uh, amount of calls that we have answered thus far.
Thank you, Mayor Sunquist. Good evening, everybody. I just wanna give you guys some updates on some statistics, uh, so you know where your fire department stands as of this year as compared to last year. For fires total this year, we've had eighty-six total fires, twenty-three of which have been confirmed building fires. Last year we had seventy-six and twenty-four. It's a thirteen percent increase in fires over last year. Uh, our ambulance has been extremely busy despite our kind of a long period during the COVID session. So far to date, we've transported seven-hundred-ninety-three patients to the hospital. That's as opposed to four-hundred-ninety-three patients as of this date last year. It's a sixty-one percent increase for over three-hundred calls more than what we had last year. Total for EMS this year, we're at two-thousand-four calls. Uh, last year, this time, we were at sixteen-hundred-sixty. That's a twenty-one percent increase in EMS call volume this year alone. Uh, so total calls for the year so far, everything considered. We currently stand at four-thousand-one-hundred-sixty-eight calls. Last year, at this time, we were at three-thousand-seven-hundred-thirty-five calls, so that's four-hundred-thirty-three both fire and EMS calls that we have increased or a twelve percent increase as compared to this date last year. Thankfully, in the last few weeks, we haven't had any major fires, which is good, or you guys certainly would have known, it would have been in the news. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have. If not, then thanks for letting me share some information with you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Um, I'd also like, uh, Acting Chief, uh, Jackson, uh, if you wouldn't mind just talking to us a little bit about where call rates have been in terms of noise complaints, animal complaints, fireworks, domestic violence. We had a report a couple work sessions ago about how they, certain complaints were on the rise. Um, we'd love for you, Acting Chief Jackson, to give us an update on where we're at.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, animal complaints, we are at five-hundred-and-seventy-four compared to six-hundred-and-eighty at this time last year, so we're down a little bit. Uh, domestic incidents, we are at one-thousand-two-hundred-and-one. Last year, we were at one-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-six. Fireworks, we are at four-hundred-and-ten, whereas last year we were at a hundred-and-forty. And noise complaints, we are at six-hundred-and-sixty-two as opposed to five-hundred-and-fifteen this time last year. However, I just wanna point out the noise complaints and the fireworks complaints that those can be mixed in together. It's, it's tough to say.
Great. A lot of the complaints have, uh, and, uh, Chief, check, correct me if I'm wrong, have leveled off, uh, in the past, uh, couple weeks?
Yes, the fireworks, especially the fireworks complaints have definitely leveled off after the Fourth of July.
Great. Any questions on those numbers for folks? Alright.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chief. I wanted to just move over to the Comptroller's Office. Mr. Thompson, if you could just give us a quick update on liability insurance and, uh, audit services.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So our, um, property liability insurance will be expiring. Our contract will be expiring at the end of September. We are in the process of putting out an R F P for those services, and we hope to have some bids to review with the council, um, that you will all vote on towards the end of, uh, September. So keep, keep your eyes peeled for that coming in September. Um, also, we will be putting out an R F P for our audits of two thousand, fiscal year two thousand and twenty. Um, so that, that will also be happening here in the next, uh, month or so.
So if you all know folks that do insurance or audit services, please encourage them, uh, to apply, uh, to the R F P. I, most of, what I had for Jeff, he's already gone through, so thanks, Jeff, for going through that list. Alright. Um, and I just had one other general department one to cover, and then I'll have a few of my own. Crystal, if you could talk about the Riverwalk Illumination Project and just where we're at on that for the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so you may all recall that we awarded, um, the Riverwalk Illumination Project at the last actual voting session. Since then, we have found out that the, uh, design consultant did not, uh, acquire the appropriate D O T, uh, permit for, um, securing or facilitating lighting onto the Washington Street Bridge. That it will set us back. We actually have a meeting on site tomorrow with the consultant and their team as well as, uh, the D O T and B P U. Hopefully it doesn't, uh, delay things too long. And I'm, I'm really hoping that it doesn't require us to go back to design. It was a, a shock to us as it was included in the contract. Um, it was, uh, a shock to us as it was included in the contract specifically with the, uh, design consultant team. Um, that they needed to make sure that they got the use and occupancy permits that were required by D O T. So we're very grateful that, that D O T is willing to join us tomorrow onsite and try to walk us through some solutions, um, that way we'll hopefully be able to update you on in the next week or so.
Great.
That's all I got.
Any questions on the, the illumination project?
So, yes, was this company experienced in doing this before? I mean, it just seems odd that they didn't recognize.
Yes.
It's just kind of like human error or they assigned the lowest person in the firm to handle it and they didn't know what they were doing?
Um, I, I think there are probably a number of factors. There was some miscommunication, I think, with their team. Um, they had a, a conversation, a verbal conversation with D O T that, um, they were under the assumption that they did not need to get the use and occupancy permit. So, but they are an experienced team and they, they do this kind of work all the time. So it was really, you know, a, a shock to us and it was very, very, very disappointing, especially since we expected to be under construction right now.
This won't increase the cost, will it?
Nope, it will not.
Great. Any other questions? So, thank you, Crystal. We did hit a snag there. We want to just update the council on where we're at, um, in this project. Uh, just a few general items, uh, for me, and then I'll be done and as promised, under the three hour mark. Um, first and foremost, uh, your packets for council may have looked a little different, uh, this work session. Uh, my team and I are trying to ensure that the council has significant background information on each resolution that they receive. Uh, as well as some discussion on the fiscal impact. Uh, so for each resolution that you will see going forward, uh, these department heads have been excellent at, um, putting together a full background for you. Um, giving you some additional information and trying to, uh, pinpoint what type of fiscal impact, if any, uh, there might be. Uh, so, uh, I do want to, uh, applaud them for that work and going forward. Uh, we're hoping that the, uh, council is able to, um, use that as a jumping point to ask further questions about those resolutions. Um, and also to provide the media and the public, uh, more information about the resolutions as they go forward. Um, if there's anything else that you feel you'd like to have on those reports, uh, please let me know. Uh, it's a, it's a way for us to get you the information so that you can read those, um, on top of the other additional information we provide, uh, with each resolution. Uh, just a, a few other reports to, uh, for the council. Um, we've received an increased number of, uh, neighborhood, uh, watch, uh, groups that are looking to be formed. Some of the council members, uh, as well as the acting chief, uh, and I have met with various neighborhood groups about potentially forming, uh, neighborhood watches. Uh, so our community in, in many different neighborhoods and sectors is looking to take back, uh, the, their community uh, and ensure that there is less crime. Uh, so be on the lookout as we go forward for, uh, some additional neighborhood watches that are starting to form, uh, in different areas of the city.
Mayor and Chief, I will give you a little insight. There, there already are a ton of neighborhood watch groups that were established at one point in time. Sometimes these are just groups that are reinvigorating. So I would have, Sarah has a li, complete list of every application and everyone that's been approved and ongoing list. Just have her validate that there wasn't already one established and there's just new. Some of them are, um, rental areas, so they switch tenants out and that kind of stuff. So they may already be established. They just need new contacts.
I appreciate that. Thank you. We'll definitely take a look into that. Uh, the other, uh, other items that we'd like to, uh, let the council know of is, um, many of you may have remembered, uh, way back when uh, there was a meeting of what they called the Metro Six. Uh, so the municipalities that, uh, would, uh, touch or be part of the city of Jamestown, uh, and around the, uh, the area. Um, we did, we were able to bring together, um, what we're now calling the Metro Seven. We've added an additional municipality. Um, we brought them together for an initial meeting just to talk about, uh, potential for additional se, shared services, uh, between municipalities. Um, some struggles, uh, that municipalities are facing, especially during the time of, uh, COVID nineteen. Uh, and started a discussion on ways we could, uh, support each other, uh, altogether as, um, one larger metro region. Um, very early discussions, uh, we had, we had met, uh, we've met once so far. Um, and we're looking to continue the discussions to see if there's additional opportunities or potential savings that could impact our city or even the other, uh, bordering municipalities. Uh, so more information to come. Just wanted to let the council know that we are looking at, uh, additional shared services and additional ways, uh, to save money as we go into next year's budget. A couple other items. Uh, you may have seen or, or heard that our, uh, our department heads, as well as some of our employees, um, recently took Narcan training, uh, from the, uh, Mental Health Association, uh, who came in in order to provide some information about some of the services that are being provided, uh, as well as, uh, teach our employees, uh, the use of Narcan for those that overdose. This is obviously a serious issue uh, in the city of Jamestown. And we thought it would be important for those employees that wished, uh, they could participate, um, in this free training. Um, they're not required as part of their employment to, uh, provide, uh, Narcan to someone. Uh, but employees did voluntarily come in and take the training in the event that they do see someone overdose uh, on, uh, either on a street or in one of our, uh, city buildings. Uh, so I'm proud to say we had a, a good number of individuals that took us up on that training, uh, including, uh, almost all of our department heads, uh, as well, in the event that there is an issue. So I do want to thank all of our employees and our department heads for engaging in that, uh, in that process. Um, just a few other items. I, I do want to update folks on the Human Rights Commission. Uh, my intention is to have those finalized this week uh, for the names of the twelve commission members, um, for the council's, uh, review. So that there's ample time to review those applications, to contact those individuals, uh, and to discuss, uh, their role on the Human Rights Commission. Um, we did receive over eighty applications. Uh, we interviewed, uh, almost every one of those. If a person was outside the city of Jamestown, uh, we did, uh, let them know that they're not eligible, uh, for that commission. So we did not interview those individuals. But the rest we did, uh, and we are hoping to finalize the commission, uh, this week for council members. And, uh, the last thing I have, uh, is for the, uh, police chief. The application period for a police chief, uh, has closed. Uh, we are, we did take part of last week and, uh, the start of this week. Uh, we are going through all of those applications, uh, to reject anyone that may not already be a certified officer uh, or has the required, uh, uh, law enforcement officer, uh, training. Those individuals, uh, are not going to be eligible. And we will then start to put together a recommendation committee, uh, and interview, uh, those applicants. So I just want to let folks know where we're at. Uh, my hope is, uh, to start to put together the recommendation committee, uh, either this week or next week. Uh, and start to schedule, uh, those, uh, interviews as we go forward in the process.
Um, Mr. Mayor, how many applications did you get? If we, I know you have to sort through, but how many applications came in?
Sure. Um, Zach, do you remember the final amount? I know it was over thirty applications last I checked.
Yeah, I think it's around thirty-five. I, I'm not sure exactly on that, the number, but it's right around there.
Around thirty-five applications, Councilmember James.
Thank you.
Of course. Uh, any additional questions? All right. Uh, with that, I have one item for executive session, uh, in regards to a potential lawsuit, uh, and that is it for me.
Thank you very much for all the updates. Um, so at this point, uh, we'll go into an executive session. We have two claims, uh, through finance and then the one item for, uh, potential litigation. Um, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So.
By Councilwoman Caruba, have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman James. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, I'll, uh, we'll go into executive session. Uh, we'll give you a minute, uh, Mr. Mayor to, uh, to turn off the recording and just let us know when you're ready.
Thank you.
One other thing before we leave, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, we are off next week. Our next work session will be August twenty-fourth. Uh, as discussed and sent out, uh, we will be meeting, uh, live, uh, in, at the B P U, uh, conference room on Monday, the twenty-fourth. It's still not open to the public. It'll, I, I would assume it'll still be recorded, uh, but, uh, just to get back, that room is much larger and we'll be able to distance a lot easier and just to try to get us back, uh, into more of a normal routine. So, uh, hopefully we'll be, we'll be back in a couple of weeks, uh, together in one place. So, uh, with that, uh, give you a few, uh, few seconds here to, uh, turn off the recording.
Great. President, those, just one other thing before, uh, we turn off the recording. Uh, there will be no, uh, action, uh, taken in terms of voting, uh, except for claims, recommendations, uh, for executive session. Uh, and the only folks that, uh, I do, uh, would like to keep, um, would be Acting Chief Jackson and Corporation Council Ramondo.
I have one last thing too. Far is our voting, our next voting session. Bring, um, somebody to put her back into our meeting because we've gotten away from that with the Zoom and, um, I think it's important that we bring somebody in to pray or, you know, before our meetings. Just, just saying.
I concur.
Uh, well, I would, I, hopefully we'll be back. If we can, you know, get back either at City Hall or in another room somewhere, that would make it much, you know, not easier, but it would be more like normal. So that's a good idea and, uh, we will do that. Thank you.
Great. Uh, just give me a minute to turn everything off.